Hey, good evening, everybody. It is four o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. This is our CIP workshop number two. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
I'm here.
Councilmember Diedrich.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carwin.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
And I am here. We're going to move on to our pledge. And I see our Parks Commissioner, Tiara. Tiara, can you please lead us in the flag salute, please?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Tremblay. It's nice to see you. Next, we're going to move on to the discussion portion. This is our CIP program workshop for fiscal years 2025 and 2026, and 2026 and 2027. Director Fidler, will you please present the item?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Nick Fidler, Public Works Director, here to present workshop number two of the CIP program. Just to recap on our budget timeline, two weeks ago, April 2nd, we had our first workshop. Tonight, we will have our second workshop. And then on April 22nd, we will be meeting with the Quality of Life Oversight Committee. And then May 7th, we propose the fiscal year '25, '26, '26, '27 main budget workshop. And then on May 14th, we'll be taking it to the Planning Commission for approval. And then ultimately, on June 4th, requesting budget adoption before both fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27. So from our last meeting, staff have been very busy. They reviewed projects proposed by council, researched council inquiries. Staff used value engineering where feasible to reduce project budgets on a couple items. And then staff reorganized project priority based on feedback received from the council. A little recap on what was discussed on April 2nd. We did add one new project, the Salt Creek Trail Paloma Wash Trail Connectivity Project. Staff recommended initiating a feasibility study to identify the safest route for the proposed trail connection. This will need a priority assignment. We talked about the Holland Road widening of doing three different phases. We did actually find that those three phases were already in our capital improvement program. So we will look towards reprioritizing them. Phase one would be the Holland Road widening Bradley Road to Han Road, which we're currently working on. And then phase two would be the Holland Road from Marietta Road to Bradley Road. We're recommending that be a priority two. And then phase three would ultimately be Holland Road, Marietta Road to our westerly city limits. And that would recommend a priority three. Then we also discussed the new community recreation center project. There are discussed potential use of $3.9 million from Rockport Ranch mitigation fees to be earmarked as a one, once fully received. We also talked about to ensure funds are used within the prescribed timeframe, alternative general funds may be swapped from another CIP project in the same amount, just to preserve the total dollar value. And then lastly, we talked about the Banner Park Playground enhancements, Banner Park Top Lot. Using CFD bond premiums, there was approximately $387,000 to start that project. Had staff do a quick estimate on that. And we're looking at about a $500,000 project. So it leaves us a little bit of funding gap of approximately $112,000, something that can be overcome as we go through the design and getting, going off the bids. So getting into the fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27 proposed CIP budget summary. As you can see in this slide, we're looking at potentially 16.7, almost 16.8 million dollars for fiscal year '25, '26. I have a total of 24 projects. And then '26, '27, nine projects totaling 14.2 million for a total of 33 projects at 31 million for the two fiscal years. I can break these down a little bit, but we go further into the slides. It helps break these each down. I did want to note at the bottom, we did decrease Bailey Park Boulevard by $200,000 and also decreased Getz Road and Vista Way traffic signal by 600 based on updated cost estimates.
Hey, Director Fidler, before you move on, on slide three, you talked about the three phases of Holland Road. And I just want to have it on record and make sure we're all clear. Eventually, we are going to align Holland as a straight, straight shot.
That's correct. Actually, that will come as part of, we actually have another project for Marietta Road widening. And according to Carlos Geronimo, our engineering manager for our CIP program, that project also helps realign with that intersection.
Okay, yeah, because that intersection staggered. Okay. Thank you. I look forward to seeing that if I'm still around. But after a resident, I look forward to seeing it.
That is currently an active project. So we'll be starting design on that here in the next few months.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oops, went the wrong way, sorry. So our transportation projects, these are the projects that we're requesting funding for in the fiscal year '25, '26, '26, '27 years. You can see we're asking for a total of 5.5 million in fiscal year '25, '26, and 400,000 in fiscal year '26, '27. We did highlight the Bailey Park Boulevard widening. That one is, we highlighted it for a reduction, but we do have some more information that we want to discuss further on in this presentation. So for our transportation projects, we have 34 projects. Once we complete this, adding these new programs or these new budgets, we have 34 projects that are actively in the transportation project category. Again, 5.9 for fiscal year '25, '26, and 404,000 for fiscal year '26, '27. These are all the projects that are within our five-year CIP. And you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, their priorities, one through two. And you can see the Holland Road widening, Bradley Road to Han. That one is now category one. Moving to this next page, if you look at the fourth line item and the sixth line item, this is where we would reprioritize at least the fourth line item. Holland Road widening, Marietta Road to Bradley Road. We would recommend that that priority be moved to a priority two. Just to be consistent with what we discussed at the last council meeting. And then moving into our traffic signal projects, we are requesting the $1 million, one for Getz Road at Vista Way, and then $600,000 from Evans Road, Craig Avenue for the new traffic signal there. So, and you can see highlighted, we reduced the 600,000 based off of current estimates. We're actively in design. We're nearing completion of that. We're also, for the Getz Road Vista Way traffic signal, we're coordinating with Southern Cal Edison to do a Rule 28, which is to remove some of the overhead power lines that are within that area. So we've been coordinating with them for the past couple of years. Because the project does widen the roadway to create space for left-turn pockets. And again, we have 20 projects in the traffic, traffic signal projects category. You can see the two at the top that we're proposing additional funds for. And then now moving into the street improvement projects, we have five new projects we're actually proposing for this section. And all of these are associated with either various grants or for CFD bond premiums. So the citywide guardrail project that's new is HSIP grant. Same thing with the edgeline striping improvements, HSIP. And then the citywide pedestrian crossing improvements is HSIP. The two, the Sun City Barnett Road sidewalk improvements, again, that's a CFD bond premiums. And then the Briggs Road Trails, Thousand Trails improvements is bond premiums. So we're looking at for fiscal year '25, '26, 2.2 million. And then fiscal year '26, '27, approximately 850,000. And the other ones are, again, those are matches for other grant funds that we're proposing or SB1 funds. So one of the big ones that I'd like to highlight is Newport Road Raise Medians. We are looking at doing the section from Winterhawk Road to Bradley Road with a funding that was an HSIP project. We're proposing to build that frontage because the development's pretty much built out on both sides in that area. So it'd be nice to complete the medians from, along that area. And then again, all the new projects you can see. And we have 33 total street improvement projects for this section. And this is the remainder of them. Our pavement management program, moving into that, we do have our '25, '26, 3.2 million, almost 3.2, over 3.266 million. We have our local road AC resurfacing, and then we have our slurry seal program. And then same thing for '26, '27. We have 3.5 million total in both for local road AC resurfacing and slurry seal program. I do have a slide that kind of shows where the proposed projects are coming for each fiscal year. I do like to highlight some of the, we do maintain a pavement management system. If you look over in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen, you could see what our total annual allocation should be for resurfacing. 5.6 for fiscal year '25, '26, and 6 million for '26, '27. And we're putting as much money as we have available to us towards this program. And our goal is to keep a 70% PCI or higher. So when we do find extra money, that's kind of where we'd like to try to program it and to keep our pavement up to date. Because that's one of our biggest assets of the city. These are the various pavement projects. Just to highlight Antelope Road, Holland Road to Newport. That project is actually in design and will be going into construction later this summer. But the 116,000 was from bond premiums from a project. But we're proposing to do some complete streets improvements near the intersection of Newport and Antelope to improve the pedestrian and biking in that area. So that's what the 116,000 is for. It's adding on to that project to improve some of the access to that area.
If I have a question about this, should I wait until the end of the presentation or ask now?
You can ask now.
I don't see the name Han Road on this list.
Han Road?
Yeah.
Han Road is, that's actually, we're working through our operating budgets to do some temporary resurfacing on Han Road near Scott Road.
So what's, what does that entail? What's the, why isn't that on this? How is that different? And what's the timeline of that?
So we go through and we put stuff based off of our pavement management system program on their prioritized. We're currently in our pavement management system update. It's probably about 75, 80% complete, and we're working through that. When they, we, that, we use the projects that are prioritized in that list. We know that there's issues out there on Han Road, and we know that there's a lot of development coming. So what we're trying to do is we're, we're working with our operating budgets to do some improvements to extend the life of that pavement until the development can occur. Because we have a significant amount of projects that are lined up on Han Road between Scott Road and Garbani Road that are coming in the very near future. So.
What is very near?
Well, very near is relative.
That's what I'm saying. So you're talking about two years.
Two years, yeah.
Yeah, so for the next two years, Han Road is going to continue to crumble.
Well, that's why we're putting, we're doing operating budget improvements on it.
Okay, so when is somebody going to go out there and do something to improve Han Road? When is that supposed to happen?
Early next fiscal year. We're, so right now, we're out to bid with the contracts for pavement rehabilitation and for concrete work. So those are, with those projects, this is the type of project that we will be utilizing those contracts for. So we'll, not next council meeting, but I think the following council meeting, we'll be bringing forward agreements for pavement management, or I'm sorry, pavement resurfacing and maintenance, and then for concrete curb sidewalk improvements.
I mean, we're really.
Part of our operating.
It's not a huge need for sidewalk improvements on Han Road.
No, that's not, but we're bringing them together.
Oh, you mean citywide?
Yeah, citywide.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's two, two separate agreements. One's for pavement management, maintenance, and the other one's for curb or concrete repairs.
And we're going to see Han Road in that?
Yeah, that's what we're planning is portion of that, those improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Director Fidler, to follow up on that, so how do improvements to Han? If it's not in a CIP, where does it fit in our overall plan? Where can I or the public go to? For transparency purpose, you know, oh, this is coming. It's not in the CIP, but where can I look or where can residents look in the future?
So that's a good question. We have, because we have staff that goes, that are out there in the fields every day that are, and what Mayor Pro Tim Carwin's talking about, Han Road, our staff go out there and have to fix potholes quite often. So they look at opportunities where they can do improvements that will reduce their time spent out there in the field trying to make repairs. We did something very similar last year on Menifee Road, just south of 74. They went in and did a few hundred feet of pavement that would continually have potholes. It'll be very similar to what we did at that location. We, you know, that, it gives us a little bit of flexibility to move around as maintenance needs show up and do some of those improvements. We have another one that we're going to be working on, on Bradley Road, which is be a double chip seal. We've been trying to coordinate our efforts with the Riverwalk project, and they've been working with us. We've been moving traffic around because they widened the roadway. And we went in with our crews and did some patch repairs. And then we'll do a double chip seal over the top to give a new surface. So those are types of operations we do in-house to where we're spending a lot of time on maintenance that are, we know that there's future projects coming that we don't want to come in and spend a million dollars and then ultimately have a developer come in and tear it out. Or because whether they've got to put in utilities, they've got to change the profile of the roadway. Typically, the developers are required to reconstruct the road their half plus 12. So they'll, they'll end up, Han Road, for example, they'll end up tearing out that whole road to facilitate their development.
So a project like this, Han Road, it would fall under maybe general maintenance of the city?
Yeah.
And subjective to?
Yeah.
Okay. When we need, when we decide, hey, this needs a little touch-up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our, our, our operation staff works very closely with our CIP staff to make sure, you know, last thing we want to do is go spend money and then have CIP go spend money again. So we try to coordinate our efforts, and we also try to coordinate our efforts with land development as well. There's, there's a lot of moving targets in the city with all the different amount of development that's occurring. So we've got to try to use our monies wisely. So we're trying to stretch our resources the best we can and then extend the life of the pavement until that development comes in. These are some of the streets we're proposing for '25, '26. You know, this is kind of a hard slide to read, but we are looking at a portion of Holland Road. It is, because that's, that's an eight to 10-year before we get to that phase three. And, and so we're looking at AC grinding overlay there. We talked a lot with staff on this one because they're out there doing a lot of pavement and patching. But by the time we get to phase three of the Holland Road, that's, that's at least eight to 10 years away. So that's why we're proposing that one. We do, the, the green on this one's our slurry seals. The blues are resurfacing, AC resurfacings. We have a section of Briggs Road, section of Scott, Menifee, and Linnanberger. And then some neighborhoods off of Holland, and then some neighborhoods in the Sun City area. I'm sorry, south of Newport. And then this is for fiscal year '26, '27. The biggest one would be Bradley Road. We're proposing to do this section. It's a fully built out. It'll time right after the bridge is complete. We have the Bradley Road at Salt Creek Bridge, which will be starting in construction here this summer. So once that project's complete, we'll continue resurfacing from Potomac all the way up to Cherry Hills.
Is there anything in the plans for restriping that section from Cherry Hills to McCall?
I believe it was just done. Cherry Hills to McCall? Yeah, we just, we just restripped Bradley Road. I'm pretty sure they did the whole length from Potomac to Cherry Hills, but off. Oh, you said Cherry Hills to McCall?
Yeah, that northern section. So where Bradley meets McCall out in front of like Blackberry Diner, that intersection?
I'll go look. I think, I thought we did all the way to McCall, but I'll have to go out there and check.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then we have a couple neighborhoods that we're proposing off of Holland, both east and west of the I-215. This is a duplicate slide, sorry. All right, drainage projects. We do have a few drainage projects we're working on. McGoffin Drainage Improvement. This is an area that floods continually. So it's coordinating with Riverside County Flood Control District on this one. The Garbani Road Drainage Improvement. This is right adjacent to the Menifee Valley Middle School. There's an Arizona Crossing that we're proposing to put a box culvert through to keep the water out of the roadway. And then our catch basin retrofits. This is a state requirement that we have to put trash capture devices. And then Ridgemore Road Crossing. This is again, one that floods every time we get a moderate rain. So putting a box culvert. So we're looking at almost 1.3 million in fiscal year '25, '26, and then 1.6 million in fiscal year '26, '27. And this is the highlight of the projects. And now moving into streetlights. We don't have any proposed streetlights at this point for these fiscal years, but I would like to note that the Romoland Grid Area Streetlights north of 74, we're actually, we'll be incorporating a lot of that into our, we have a complete streets project that we're, an ATP project that we're working on. So as we build that project, we will add some lighting to that area. And then Menifee Road Streetlights, Garbani Road to Scott Road. Again, that's a project that we're working on to widen, and that will be incorporated as part of that project. The Vista Way and Castle Bonita Drives, that's not currently programmed.
Hey, Director Fidler, I had a question on the Quail Valley Grid Streetlights. If I recall correctly, I might have read the warrant register a while back, and one of the expenditures under the warrant register was more money for Quail Valley solar lights. It wasn't, do I recall that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. We did acquire, I believe, five solar powered streetlights. They will be placed on Getz Road in some of the sharp curves that are at the northern end of the city right before it transitions into Paris.
Okay.
And then transitions back out. There's four, five locations that we're putting the streetlights there. We're installing those with city staff. So they're right now coordinating those efforts. The rains kind of set back a little bit. But we're going to get that back on track once, you know, once the weather clears up.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good location for them. That's a dark hill.
Yeah.
And then going down into Paris, down that steep hill, I think that's a wise choice. Thank you and staff for working on that.
So public facility projects. The first one is developer deposits for Heritage Lakes. This is actually from Menifee Valley. They deposited 2.5 million as part of their DA. We're initiating the RFQ, RFP for design consultants. And then they also already paid the 7.5 million for the remaining construction of the project. So we'll initiate the design starting early next fiscal year and then hopefully going right into construction the following fiscal year. And then Fire Station 68 is additional interior improvements. So 2.8 for '25, '26, and 7.5 for '26, '27. And these are the two listed projects. So Park. I didn't do that. Parks, Trails and Recreation Projects. So we have a Gel Webb Sports Park, we, or Gel Webb Park restroom. We talked a little bit about this last time. This is additional funds to complete the construction of the, the connected restroom. So that, that will move forward. Then the Evans Road, Evans Park North Design and Construction, additional three hundred thousand. And then Banner Park Playground Enhancement, that is the bond premium for that park. Like earlier discussed, it's a little bit underfunded, but as we go through design and procurement, we'll, we'll figure out what our exact costs are going to be. So the Banner Park, again, that's the next fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. We can continue to look at the costs as, as we move into next fiscal year and maybe if we need to, we can budget additional funds during mid-cycle.
Before we move on, can you go back to that last slide?
Say the new site, I've missed the new Salt Creek Trail. So we have that as a priority three right now, the Salt Creek Trail Paloma Wash Trail Connectivity as a new project. And we talked about being a, a priority three. Staff will kind of start looking around to see what, what would be necessary for a feasibility study.
One other thing I wanted to ask you about is it says La Ladera Park in Hampson since complete. I know that was some landscaping and things like that, but I recalled seeing approvals for expanding that out for another ball field and some lights and expanding the parking lot and that kind of thing. Where are we on that and why isn't that on this list?
I'll have Mr. Howell help answer that.
Good, good afternoon. So partial of that is complete. There was two phases of that. The parking lot's complete, so that we're in the design phase for the, the extra ball field that'll be there and putting the sports field lighting at, at those ball fields at the park. So that's in the design phase right now. That's where the complete was, the La Ladera Park Amens was phase one that was on there. So it's a miscommunication on there, but we'll adjust that. But it is still in progress for that.
Okay, so phase two design should be on this list?
It's in there and, and we have the funding, correct.
Okay. And is there a timeline on when we expect that design to be complete?
The design will be complete within the next sixty days and then we'll start our internal review with EMWD, also with the water lines that are getting moved and inside permit wise for plan review and.
And the other thing I don't see on this list, and maybe I'm just missing it, is the, the new park in Sun City? The one behind the Faith Lutheran Church?
Correct.
Is that? That's Central Park, which one? Sun City Park, is that this one?
Sun City.
That's twenty-four eleven?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
I have some questions about park lighting as well. Perhaps Bryce, maybe you'd be able to help. I don't mean to throw you into the fire, Bryce, but you know, that's why we pay you.
Scattered over there quick, no.
Speaking of park lighting, can you talk and testify tell the council, you know, can you tell us about making parks available for the athletics and the teams and, and the demand for more park lighting and, and how reservations are being filled up and the demand and just give us some context?
Yeah, well, our fields are definitely the high demand. They're definitely used seven days a week at all, all of our parks that do have lighting. So our reservations that we allocate to, we do it twice a year. We start, we have a, a policy in place for that as well. It'll start with, our recreation partner does that. So with our recreation leagues, we want to use as many residents as possible to be able to do it. And, and the rate goes up just a little bit if they're outside of the city, they're non-residents that can get those fields. So the nonprofit recreation leagues will usually get priority that on, on those fields and then we work our way up for that. And, and obviously, the ones that have the highest percentage, seventy plus, seventy percent plus of Menifee residents in them. So they'll, they'll get the allocation period and that's for a six month period. And that would be either your multipurpose or your ball fields that we have. So that could be soccer, flag football, and then baseball and softball that are there. We only currently have, we are in looking for more, well, we have projects in the future for more lighting, that some developments that are going to be doing, multipurpose fields that are going to be coming in at Legato. Obviously, these are a couple of years out, but we will be doing that. But then we're also looking to see what parks are feasible for lighting. We don't have funding for them, but we definitely would like to because users would do that. Valleywide Recreation has their own fields as well that are in Menifee and some of those are lit, but we, we don't have any, anything we can do to allocate for those for the residents of Menifee.
Okay, thank you. You know, in previous discussions I've had, I've, I've heard potential fits for putting lights would be Peterson Park and Hidden Hills Park. And, and those parks also provide suitable parking for, for these leagues and the families. Do you?
Correct, yeah. So those are, I know we're, we're talking about on that. So those ones have parking lot, they have street parking that are available that wouldn't impact the community, the residential, I mean, that are right next to the park. So those ones are feasible for that. It's just a funding, finding a, for us to find a funding source for that to be able to put those lights up at the field.
Okay. And, and competition for space, space at the fields is, is pretty competitive?
It is, it's, it's very competitive. There's a lot of, a lot of youth sports in, in Menifee.
Yeah.
And surrounding areas, but it's just, there is definitely that competitive that we're booked up seven days a week on all, all these fields.
Okay. Well, that's something as a council, I think we should also consider while we're on the CIP allocating money to putting park lights in our parks. You know, we have so many growing families, our median age is thirty-eight here and giving them adequate space is important. So I wanted to hear it from you. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Could we make a referral to parks and trails to maybe review which parks are not scheduled for lights and might benefit from them?
Sure, you want to send it down to the Parks Commission and have them make a recommendation of CIP projects that we should fund?
I would like to get their input on it. I think that instead of us just picking, because that's their, that's their wheelhouse and they've studied this.
Yeah.
You know, we've got kind of a thirty thousand foot view on it. So if they could make recommendations to us on, on which parks would benefit from which specific amenities.
Yeah.
I would love to get that input. We rely on them for that expertise.
Yeah. If we were to do something like that, this funding would be, I don't know if we can get it in time for.
We've got another workshop coming, don't we? No?
Yeah, well.
I mean, do you have a suggestion?
Well, hearing from staff and in, in previous discussions I've had with staff, park lighting at Peterson and Hidden Hills would be suitable. It has a demand, the, the parking situation would work. And it would be something as a council we could accomplish right now instead of adding more bureaucracy. I get that, you know, it's important that they have a say and be involved in the process. I, I feel like I've gotten feedback. Man, okay, if you want to send it to parks, we can. I just would love to send funding.
It's just that I don't know how much we could allot for budget, what it's going to cost, what it's going to entail, the fees. There's a lot that goes into it other than just saying we just want to put money on it in the budget.
Well, I've, I've heard estimates, it's about four hundred thousand dollars per park. If anyone on staff can clarify that?
Yeah, I'm not anti-lights, I just.
That estimation's correct. About, per field, it would be about four hundred thousand. So back in twenty twenty-one, we completed Centennial, we put the sports field lighting in it. That, that was eight hundred thousand, but the conduit was already in there. So that was just the lights and that. So about approximately about four hundred thousand per field would, would be correct.
Okay. You know, I would like to, we're not done with the presentation and talking about the budget. I just think it would be a win that we could say as a council, we accomplished, we funded two park light projects. If we send it down to parks, I'm hoping we can get it back in time for adopting a budget, but I don't know if that's possible.
What, is that money available or would we be taking it from other projects?
You know, I, I did want to bring up the funding for the community center, the three point nine million and putting it away for five years. But we are, I can hold off on those thoughts and we can, I'm just dropping the seed right now and I wouldn't want three point nine million to be stuck in a community center for five years while we can deliver families' everyday amenities right now. But I didn't, thank you, Bryce, for your information and your insight. It's a discussion we can, let's get through the presentation and we can discuss it more.
Sounds good. So technology infrastructure projects. Again, we're, we're not proposing anything new in this area, still working through a couple of the projects, the ERP program and our city hall backup generator system. So these are the projects we're proposing for the quality of life. We have one point two million for McCall Boulevard, I two fifteen interchange. And then we have four hundred thousand dollars for the Getz Road Vista Way Traffic Signal. And then six hundred thousand dollars for Evans Road Craig Avenue Traffic Signal. Eleven, one, one hundred and eleven thousand for citywide guard rail, thirty-eight thousand for the edge line striping and roughly thirty-seven for the citywide pedestrian crossing. And then lastly, the hundred and twenty-five thousand in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven for the Garbani Road Drainage Improvements. So total for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of two point three eight six and then a hundred and twenty-five thousand in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And again, those will be presented to the Quality of Life Oversight Committee. So I did discuss a little bit earlier about the Bailey Park Boulevard widening project. I wanted to circle back with the council. This was a project that was brought on a while back to help facilitate some of the growth and development in the area south of Scott Road and east of Ziders in kind of our Innovation District area. Recently, we've been seeing a little bit less activity than what was originally happening in development. And then on top of that, we're in the midst of this Innovation District program that could change the dynamics of that area. We have been working on the design for that project and the costs have continued to escalate because of the materials. We're, we've been working with EMWD on the design and because of the design is requiring the depth of the sewer line to be anywhere from twelve to fifteen feet deep. And so we had geotechnical data or, you know, we had did some drilling, exploratory drilling and found that anywhere between eight and ten feet were running into, to granite. So that's why the costs have kind of went up and for that project. So we're, we're kind of relooking at this project and thinking maybe this isn't the appropriate time to, to continue to move forward with it until we get a better idea of some of the development that would kind of come out of that Innovation District. You know, might change the size of the sewer line that we need, might change the location of the sewer line we might need. So it was a potential to, one, not program the two point five million that we showed earlier into the budget and, and preserve that for maybe a future request. And then, two, what do we want to consider even pulling backs from the money that we have already proposed and move it into something that we can seek more rapidly, kind of like the mayor was talking about, some of these more immediate needs that, that we have. So that was one. And then the above ground fuel station is a project that was started several years ago of a potential of putting a, a fueling station at our, our current PD department. But as we've progressed and we know that's not going to be our forever home and potentially moving that PD to a new location where we would master plan and put the, the, the fueling station in the appropriate location, we're proposing maybe to free up some of that general fund money as well because that would become more of the part of the campus design when we did the, the PD station and the mock station. So we didn't want to start designing something that would impact the overall facility out there. So, you know, kind of going back to, can we free up these design, these funds and use them now when, when we would could ultimately have a better understanding what we're going to do in the future for those projects?
Director Fiddler, I was writing a lot of notes. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page with you. So the above ground fuel station you're recommending, we hold off on? That way when we have a concrete location, we put it at the right place at the right time?
Yeah.
Okay. And if we pause that, we would be, would we be opening up any money for the city or?
Yeah, that would be relieving a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Oh, that's the one hundred and ninety-two thousand, okay. And then for Bailey Park, if I heard correctly, we're, you're making a recommendation to hold off until the Innovation District concept is a little bit more thorough and we know what we're doing a little bit better?
And then, and that when we start to get some more activity of, of developers in that area.
Okay.
And facilitated.
Would that free up?
Yeah, there's, there's approximately two point three million.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not the fifty-nine thousand is developer deposit, we can't free up that money.
Oh, I see.
I don't remember if that's incorporated or not.
Okay, thank you.
Now, wouldn't that Measure A be restricted to transportation related needs?
Yeah.
As well as Measure DD would be to public safety?
Public safety. So, yeah, we'd have to look at some of the, those.
Essentially, we have the million fifty thousand.
Well, I mean, if we wanted to program Measure A money to, to resurfacing projects.
Right, other than, other than those designated. I mean, we only have a million dollars at our discretion to put anywhere we want to, not the two point three million.
So those are just some thoughts that we had, you know, for the council to consider as we move forward, as, as the Bailey Park Boulevard project continue to, to grow. Because of the sewer installation, you definitely don't want to build a road and not include the sewer because then we'd have to tear the road up to put the sewer in in the future. So we wanted to revisit that with, with the council and also with the, with, with the Innovation District kind of in the midst. We, we would like to get a little bit more clarity until we, you know, that comes about. So, yeah, any other questions in regards to, to that? We did, we did, it was one of the things, we added a couple of potential projects that could use some of the funding. Menifee Road Diamond Drive to three hundred feet north would be one point six five nine. And then Antelope Road, North Newport Road to Alder Gate. Menifee Road project, that's a little gap that we're missing. We, we recently resurfaced Menifee Road from Holland to Newport. And then just last year, we resurfaced from Antelope or just north of Alder Gate all the way to McCall. So this would kind of fill in that little gap. And then Antelope Road, we currently have a project to resurface Antelope from Craig to Newport and this would complete the segment from Newport to, to Alder Gate.
Thank you, Director Fiddler. I have a question. Are there any other projects that weren't presented today that, speaking of gap funding, are there any other projects you would recommend that we're close to, maybe within half a million or a million? Or, you know, just something that we can get across the finish line and say we accomplished for the residents? Is there anything within striking distance that was not presented today?
Not, not on these projects. All of our bigger projects are multi, you know, few million dollar needs. We're, we're working on the Scott Road Bundy Canyon widening project. We are seeking other grant opportunities for two and a half million here and we're always going out and looking for additional funding to help fill those gaps. The Holland Road project from Bradley to, Holland to Bradley, we're, we have a good possibility of funding through WR COG to complete that, that gap need. Really, right now, we're. Really, right now, our biggest underfunded stuff is, like I showed earlier, is our pavement management program. If, if we had additional funding, we can try to catch up on some of our pavement management needs and get ahead of it before it goes to a point where it needs to be resurfaced or reconstructed. We can come in and do some additional slurry seals on some of our major roadways, catch some minor grinding overlays before they turn into a full reconstruct. So those, those would be a, a good area that we could focus on to, to preserve our biggest asset.
Okay, and looking at the presentation, the two projects for PMP would be the Menifee Road and the Antelope Road?
Yeah, that's two, yeah.
Around the 2.4 million.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, can I jump in with a question on that?
Yes, yes, of course, Councilman Diedrich.
Thank you. So, we're short on our PMP program, right? A couple million, right? Is that, like, is there a reason? Is, are, are our surrounding neighbor cities, are they also behind like we are? Or are we the odd one out or?
No, actually, um, we have a really good, uh, our pavement condition index is really good and we want to keep it there. And the way to keep it there is you do preventative maintenance. And so by applying additional funds to, to do the preventative maintenance, extends the life of our broad, of our roads and it also protects the condition of the roads. A lot of cities, their, their pavement condition indexes are in the 50s and 60s. Some of them are down in the 30s, so, but every city's challenged with the fact that we don't have enough money to maintain our roads. It, the vehicle tax keeps going down, gas tax keeps going down. So the, our resources for these funds are continuing to dwindle. And now you have electric vehicles that are barely paying any usage for the roadways. And, you know, they're heavier vehicles, so they cause a little bit more damage to the roadways. So, yeah, it's, it's across the board, all, all, all cities, all states. The road infrastructure is underfunded. It, it, we just don't collect enough gas taxes or, or vehicle license fee taxes or anything to help, help offset the costs of, of pavement management. The, the one good thing is for our, our city is that we're a fast-growing community. So development does take care of a lot of our, our roadway surfaces. And, but in 10 years from now, when, when those developments are 10 years old, it'll continue to ramp up. But that's why we want to try to stay ahead of the game and, and keep the, the roadways maintained.
Understandable, I think it's one of our residents' most common complaints is the, the quality of the road. So I think it's definitely something that we need to be focusing on, thank you.
Council, any other questions at this time? I have a question. Bryce, you're my favorite guy today. When is the next Parks meeting? They usually meet the first meeting.
First Thursday of every month.
The first Thursday of every month, okay. So seeing that we're in, in April, their next meeting would be first week in May. Okay.
May 1st.
May 1st? Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak or has any correspondence been received?
No correspondence and no speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, council, now it's our turn to deliberate and take part in discussion. Would anybody like to go first? Okay, I'll hop in first. Okay, so, I, I understand last time as a council, we talked about allocating the 3.9 to the community center. You know, after talking to staff a little bit more in-depth about it, we do have that timeline to get it done in four years. And the, the other concern I had, I understand we can switch out the money, so we can play with it a little bit. But the other concern I had is we're still having public workshops on this, on what the design should be. The council and the Parks Commission is still deliberating what the design is going to be. We're not sure what the final cost is going to be. And after evaluating it a little bit more, and I'm thankful we have two CIP meetings and we're going to be tight in our budget, I would like to see money allocated to near-term accomplishments before we're committing such a large amount of money to something we don't know what the final cost is going to be. And so, Councilman Carwin, Mayor Pro Tem Carwin, you mentioned sending the question down to the Parks Commission and seeing that we have their meeting in May. If we were to get a recommendation from the Parks Commission, I think we can get it in time before we adopt the budget in June. So I would be interested, Mayor Pro Tem, if you would join me in sending the question down to the Parks Commission. Which park lights are feasible? Which parks would work? And by the time we have our budget workshop in June where we adopt it, we can have some clarity. What do you think?
Yeah, you know, I was looking at the two parks you were talking about and I just wonder whether Quartz Hill would benefit from lights if, if we do one or the other. I don't want to make a snap judgment on that based on just photos and my, you know, I don't have use of the parks for leagues and sports and things like that personally. So I would like to get input from the public on the, the need for those things and also from the surrounding communities of whether they want to limit access to the park to daytime hours only or night. They might not have any opinion one way or another and we could take it that way. But I think assigning additional activity and burden on those parks without at least hearing from the surrounding residents and the people who use the parks, I think would be kind of arbitrary. But if it turns out that those needs are well-presented and well-supported, then that gives us a green light. So I think an opportunity for the public to be heard on that would help a lot in us guiding where to direct those funds.
Okay, so then I would like to make a future agenda request to the Parks Commission at their next meeting to evaluate park lighting needs. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Temple.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I, I, I think it's important that we continue to work to improve, like you're saying, the lighting in parks and those different things. I think it's very wise that instead of, you know, making a decision right now that we do what we've planned on doing and sending that to Parks Commission, that's why we have them. And I think it's, I think it's wisdom that we have that process so that we don't suddenly decide we're going to spend money and we don't know the final cost. We don't know, you know, what we have and what we have in the future. With respect to the allocation of the funds that we had planned on providing for the community center, you know, that came with a lot of, a lot of deliberation. And the fact that it came from developed impact fees from that area to be allocated again for that area for something that would be available for the entire community of Menifee, not just a certain region. And I would just like to state that I still support that money being allocated to the community center, not reallocated to another project, because it is going to happen. It was, that land was gifted by the county to us. And I think it's really important as part of our social infrastructure to fund, at least partially, that, that center before it gets built so that we have those funds waiting for us there.
Councilman Dynis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what Councilman Temple was talking about with the 3.9 million. You know, this came from, I think it was at Rockport, wasn't it? And, you know, so the residents there are paying into this. It'd be nice if the money stayed close to them so they could have somewhat of a direct benefit from that instead of spreading it throughout the rest of the city. And second, when we did our strategic plan, our vision, one of our top priorities was community centers. That was one of the most important things that we needed. And so if we take the 3.9 now, there's no guarantee that will be reappeared. This is one-time money and it's going to be, we'll have to build on that in reserves in order to bring the, the community center to fruition. But I think we don't want to take our eyes off the long-term goal of community centers in here that will, that will serve our residents for, for some near-term fixes when, I think we have, as we found out, there's some extra monies for other things. You know, if, if our community centers are important, we need to support it and we need to make sure that they're funded. And spending, and with the one-time money of that 3.9 million is, is a pretty good start on it. So I think we need to step back and say, you know, our goal is to have community centers in our, in our city and we're taking the first step by allocating funds for it.
Councilman Temple and Councilman Dynis, I'd like to throw out a proposition and I, I, I have a concern that we don't know what the final cost and the design of the center is going to be. And to put so much money towards something we don't have a final answer to is a little bit, I don't want to put the, the cart in front of the horse, so to speak. But you two made a valid point that, you know, maybe we can spend the money in the neighboring, in the community because it is part of that, that neighboring community. What about, would, would, do you two have an appetite to pull some of that 3.9 and finish the Banner Park improvements to put the, um, the tot lot or the, the playground there? It would be a small portion of the 3.9. We would have an immediate win for that community. Here's the other concern that I do have. The other concern is, uh, staff is, is making projections that we're no longer going to be at 6% growth. We're going to be at 2% growth. So I don't want this council for the next couple of years to, lack of a better term, plateau and not have any accomplishments, not take any work off staff's plate. I think we can knock some stuff off the list and while still keeping that community center in mind. Councilman Dynis.
Yes, I mean, we just had a presentation that there's two projects that were recommended by staff not to do. And, you know, that, that gives us almost 1.2 million dollars of excess funds. You know, after 40 years of, of funding government projects, if you, if you spend the money today, you're not going to have it tomorrow. If you spend that 3.9 million now, when it comes time to build the, the community center, you're going to have to come up with another 4 million on top of that. And there's no guarantee that will happen. I think there's plenty of money here that as we get, the results back from, in recommendations from our Parks Commission on, on the lights, we know it's 112,000 for Banner Park. Then we can take and look at a holistic look at, at everything that we have before us and, and immediate needs and then, then find out how much that is and if that matches the, the funds that have just been made available to us. But until we have more information in front of us, starting to, to pick off, you know, funds for long-term projects that we've all, I mean, the entire council said that was important to do community centers. To do that now and start picking off money, you know, you're just going to saddle for the future councils to come up with additional money for a community center that we've, we say is a priority today. So I would rather wait and not do anything with that 3.9. Wait till we hear back what the, the costs are for, you know, what parks are appropriate, the costs and whatever, you know, what funds are, are truly available and see if we can't handle all the things you want to get done with what we have, the money on hand instead of, you know, robbing, you know, our, a future project.
Councilman Diedrich.
I have just a question for staff along those lines. So if, if we did what Councilmember Dynis is proposing and we leave the 3.9 dedicated or allocated for the community center, if then we got some information back about whether it's the lighting or other banner project, or Banner Park or other projects, can we pull from that 3.9 or is it locked in that 3.9 forever must be used for the community center?
I, I think the question's directed at me right. So I, I think it's, it's your prerogative. You can always allocate and reallocate those funds. I think, I think, I didn't do the math, but I think we can come up, if, if the council is, is okay with us freezing the projects that we mentioned, so to speak, we can probably generate about 1.2 million dollars that could be available to, to either invest. Should the commission, the Parks Commission, come back with ideas about park lighting, that we have about a million dollars to invest in that. And also, we might be able to fill the gap with, with the, the amount that's needed to, to build the Banner Park playground. So, um, but again, the, the allocation of those funds is, is entirely within your prerogative as a majority of the council.
But it's, it's adjustable in the future, correct? We could, if another project came up or something came up where we said this, this is an immediate need, we need to pull 1 million from that 3.9 to get this accomplished. We could do that in the future, correct?
True, you know, we, we try to bring the, the opportunity to look at the CIP twice in the form of a workshop and then once in the form of a final approval. But if the commission wants to bring up the CIP again in a special meeting, we can always do that and.
Or it could even be next, it could even be at next year's CIP. We could pull funds from that if we were, if.
That's true as well, yes.
Councilman Temple.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I concur with, with Councilmember Dynis on, on the funds. The two projects that, that appears are putting on hold, those general funds can be used for these types of projects like the lighting at parks, is that correct? Okay, so, you know, I think, I think that's a really good thing. And I mean, I just, I stick with my, my prior statement. I really think it's important that these things go through the proper channels rather than making a snap decision here on things that just sound really good but lack the proper coursework and deliberation that's important for, for projects to ensure that we're doing the right thing with the public's money. I know it's the right thing, I know it's a neat thing to, to, to improve parks, but there's a process that's in place and I think it's imperative that we follow that process.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I would like to hear how much this stuff is going to cost. And then we can say, great, do we have the money? Like what the city manager was saying, so we might not need to take anything from the 3.9 million. We might be able to do both, which would be kind of ideal. Instead of making a snap decision now to reallocate that money here when they come, when we get the recommendation and they say, here's what we'd like to see happen and here's what it's going to cost. By the way, do we, did the Parks Commission have a CIP workshop? Like, what we're asking for now, why don't we have that already? Why hasn't Parks chimed in on what they'd like to see here?
Hi, good evening, Mariana Mitchell, Community Services Director. Yes, the Parks and Recreation Trails Commission did have an opportunity to review our current budget, our current CIP projects and, and provide input on future projects. But we also gave them the information on, on where our current projects are and we're kind of focusing on completing projects that are currently already in progress. So we did get some feedback on, on potential future projects.
So did the commissioners have an opportunity to say, here's some things we'd like to see added to the CIP list and recommended to city council?
Yes.
And did they?
Uh, yeah, we had talked about a couple of different items that keep coming up. There are things like our, our future heritage park or regional park. And then some looking at infill projects, but nothing specific, so.
So there was nothing really about enhancing current parks that they were talking about? It's about adding new parks?
That was the, the majority of the conversation, yes.
Okay, so I can see the disconnect there and why we didn't get that recommendation already. So, yeah, I think there's, it sounds to me like there's a very real possibility that we could do both if we just get the analysis done, which would be even better. You know, instead of not doing one thing to do the other so we can do something fast and not do the long-term thing, we could fund the long-term thing and do the fast thing if we get the recommendation, which would be great. So I think, knowing how much it's going to cost, maybe it's less, maybe there's already conduit there, who knows? And if that can happen, that'd be great. So making a decision today to allot a certain amount of money based on an estimate for something we don't even know if there's a need for, for certain, I think, wouldn't be fiscally responsible considering the fact that with these recommendations here, we might be able to do both. So, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear those recommendations before we make changes in the budget. And it sounds like, based on what you were saying, Mary, that we're going to have time to do that. So we still could, so that's, that's what I would like to see happen.
Okay, thank you. I, I think we're going to take the right step to send it down to Parks to see if they make a recommendation. You know, straight to the point, I hear a lot of terminology being thrown, you know, don't want to make a snap decision or hasty decision, you know. Long story short, I would really like to see some accomplishments instead of allocating money to a final cost, which we have no determination on either with the community center. But let's send it to Parks, they're going to vet it a little bit more thoroughly and make some recommendations to us. City Attorney Melching.
Thank you, Mayor. On that last point that you were.
On that last point that you were making, I think you made the motion that the item be sent to Parks and the Mayor Pro Tem seconded or vice versa. This, because it's not a future agenda item for the city council, you should have a vote of the council to make the, to make the referral a formal motion.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney Melching. We have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and call the vote. Is that what we should do, City Attorney? Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the vote?
Councilmember Dynas?
Yes.
Councilmember Diedrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, counsel, are, is there any other discussion we would like to do on any of the other recommendations from Director Fidler? We're still open for that?
I said everything I think I wanted to say about additional projects at the last meeting, so I don't have anything else to add today.
Okay. Director Fidler?
I have a question.
Oh, okay, we have a question.
To re, vote to reallocate the funds for the PMP projects?
City Manager Via, go ahead.
Yes, I think we'd like to get a little direction because if indeed your desire is to, to freeze those projects and pull that money out, we have to give Director Fidler and staff a little bit of time to, to pull those out and then come back with, with the amount that could actually be disposed or discretionary. We think it's about 1.2, but we need to come back and then, and then, and then we can come back with, with that recommendation. And hopefully, we have the findings of the Parks and Works Commission by then. It's going to be tight, but we can come back with something. But I'd like to have a motion from you to be able to, to be able to freeze those projects.
Okay, just to be clear, City Manager Via, you're asking for a, a vote from the council to freeze the Bailey Park and the above-ground fuel station and to give staff time to repurpose those. Correct? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and motion to do that.
I'll second.
And counsel, you have the vote screen on your, available for you there? Okay, that passes 5-0.
And was there also a reprioritization that staff was looking for on one or more projects?
Yeah, good call, MPT Carwin. Director Fidler, you asked for a Priority 3 at the beginning of the presentation to be moved up, if I recall correctly?
That's correct. The section of Holland Road from Bradley to Marietta, that we were recommending to move that from a 3 to a 2. And then also confirming the previous, for the new project, for the feasibility study to confirm that that's a Priority 3. I'm sorry, for the, that's for the feasibility study for the pedestrian trail connection of the Paloma Wash and the Salt Creek Trail.
Okay, so to move that project on Marietta, Holland, to move that up to 2?
Yes.
And then to accept the Paloma Wash, Salt Creek Trail as part of the CIP?
As part of, yeah, as a 3.
As a 3?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, counsel, do we have any discussion on that or do we have a motion to go ahead and approve that?
Can we do those together or do we need to do them separately? I move approval, both recommendations.
Okay, I'll second. We can do them together. Excellent. Okay, and that passes 5-0. Okay, counsel, before we wrap this up, last call. Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and adjourn this special meeting at 5:11. Thank you, everybody.